Recording in progress.
Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this evening on Monday, November 6th. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here.
We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete the yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for a public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We'll begin with the first item on the special meeting agenda, which is a study session item, citywide transportation demand management ordinance update. We have a presentation from Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner. Welcome, Sue Ellen.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Councilmembers, again, Sue Ellen Atkinson with the city's Public Works Department, and I have with me tonight Matt Goine from our consulting firm, Fair and Peers. And tonight, we'll be providing an update on the citywide San Mateo TDM ordinance. So tonight, just as an overview, we'll be giving an introduction and background for the project, overview of stakeholder engagement to date, discussion on policy analysis, and then wrap up with remaining schedule for the project and what to expect in the next few months. And while you're listening to the presentation, just a few questions for your consideration that we'll be asking for feedback for at the end of the presentation. So the first is what kinds of projects should be required to comply with the TDM ordinance? And then the following three are related to monitoring and compliance, in terms of frequency for compliance, how projects that are out of compliance should be treated, and what, if any, consequences for serially noncompliant projects should be considered. So to start off, we'll go through a quick introduction of what is TDM, which is transportation demand management. And our partners in Arlington, Virginia, at Mobility Lab have a great definition that states that transportation demand management is influencing people's behavior to use the existing infrastructure in more efficient ways. So while they may still be driving, they can also use our existing roadway infrastructure to get around in other ways. And the way that transportation demand management does that is it provides options for improved mobility, including making other modes more easy and accessible, incentivizes people to use other modes, for example, with free or subsidized transit passes, provides disincentives to drive alone, and provides teaching and training to affect people's behavior. And so with all of that together, TDM can lead to less driving, which can affect reduced VMT, can reduce the amount of GHG emissions attributed to transportation in our community, and also reduce the number of people on the roadways or the congestion that we see. So a little bit of local and regional context for you in terms of what we're currently doing in TDM in and around San Mateo. So first, in terms of our local city, you may be familiar with the Rail Corridor Transit Oriented Development Plan, that's an existing plan, and the development of the existing Rail Corridor Transportation Management Association, or TMA, came out of that plan. The TMA and the Rail Corridor Plan are separate from the citywide ordinance and are not part of the discussion for this evening. You're also very familiar with our current general plan and the updated general plan that's been before you recently, as well as our city's municipal code and our transportation impact analysis guidelines. And then, of course, we have existing adopted citywide plans that help us to provide that roadway and multimodal network that the TDM measures build on. In terms of the state and the region, there are a number of state assembly bills and a number of regional plans, including Plan Bay Area 2050, the MTC Transit Oriented Communities Policy, and our neighbors at CCAG, their congestion management program, that all provide guidance in terms of transportation demand management. Focusing in a little bit more on the CCAG policy, because within the city, we have the requirements in our rail corridor area, and then citywide, if a project falls under the requirements of the CCAG policy, they're required to provide a TDM plan. Currently, those are the only ways that we're able to require the development of a TDM plan for projects that come into the city. So we wanted to zoom in a little bit on the CCAG requirement. The way that the CCAG requirement works is that there's a certain threshold in terms of trips for a project, and if the project is expected to have more than 100 net new trips, then they would be required to comply with the CCAG TDM policy. We have had some projects that have fallen under that, but not all projects. And so the citywide ordinance gives us the opportunity to expand the requirements for TDM so that it applies to projects that don't fall under the Rail Corridor Plan and that don't fall under the CCAG policy. And it gives us the opportunity to require trip reduction measures for more projects so that we can move the needle in terms of roadway congestion in the city. So the way that we plan to do that with the citywide TDM ordinance is through developing a citywide ordinance to mitigate the impacts of development on the transportation system, and that's through taking a comprehensive approach. So really looking at all projects that should be required to reduce the number of trips on the roadway network and requiring trip reduction goals for that project. In doing so, we can support our existing citywide goals in our climate action plan, in our general plan, and in our active transportation plans to encourage walking, bicycling, and transit use. And in having a citywide TDM ordinance, as opposed to one that's developed for the full region, we're able to implement an ordinance that's tailored to San Mateo and the unique type of city that we want to be growing here. And in developing the ordinance, we were thinking about several parameters. Performance metrics, you know, once we have the ordinance in place, how do we track it? What elements do we need to include in the ordinance? How can TDM measures be tailored to our geographic context? We have a very unique geography in the city, and we want to make sure to take that into consideration. And then, three items that you'll hear more about tonight, how often should monitoring occur under the ordinance? What team will manage the ongoing monitoring? And what does compliance under the ordinance look like? So to date, we've done an existing plan review and best practices research of a number of other cities that have implemented similar ordinances. We've conducted initial stakeholder outreach. We've gone to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and the Planning Commission with a similar introduction to the ordinance. We've developed the framework outline, and we've developed a TDM strategies list. Coming up is developing the framework for the policy and the draft policy, and then later, the compliance and monitoring requirements. At this time, I'll pass it over to Matt, and he'll go more into detail on policy.
Thank you, Sue Ellen. As Sue Ellen mentioned, my name is Matt Goine, and with Fair and Peers. And so I'm going to be presenting on the work that's been completed so far, and we've made some good progress. So starting with, we did a best practices review to review both local and national plans to understand and make sure that we're accounting for kind of both what are the well-researched strategies and approaches, as well as what are some of the new, more innovative approaches that might be out there. We also reviewed the local context, which Sue Ellen teed up nicely, is there is a lot of unique features, including the fact that you have three Caltrain stations, and we want to take advantage of that to the extent possible. So we developed this tiering program where we have downtown and the other transit-oriented community areas in one tier, other redevelopment areas that might need additional support, such as through shuttles, and then the rest of the city that isn't targeted for redevelopment. In terms of stakeholders, we've done a variety of stakeholder engagement so far, which includes talking with local and small business owners, such as the Downtown Association, transportation providers and regional agencies, such as Samtrans and Caltrain, developers such as local affordable housing providers like MidPen or Bridge and other market rate developers. And then, as Sue Ellen mentioned, we've also presented and heard from the planning and sustainability infrastructure commissions. Some of the stakeholder feedback that we've heard has been very helpful so far. On the top row, some of the challenges that we've heard, such as just barriers within the city, whether geographic or whether they're just the built environment, because we don't have walking and bicycle facilities that we need to be able to reach the transit and be able to shift from automobile modes. There's also a few seamless intermodal connections between different transit service. There's a desire for better bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And one of the challenges for developers really is on the transit subsidy side. It can be really expensive, particularly for affordable housing developers. So we want to be conscious of that in terms of not placing undue burden for some of these measures on those developments. On the opportunities, as I mentioned, there's a lot of the Caltrain stations and providing first and last mile connections to Caltrain, expanding transit walls, making sure that there's flexible mobility options for people to take Samtrans or Caltrain, supporting e-bike growth by providing charging stations, for example, in garages could be a simple thing. There's also a lot of desire for promoting expanding shuttle services and car pulling incentives that programs particularly for those areas outside of the Caltrain areas. And one of the things that we heard, you know, particularly strongly from downtown, was that there was just a lack of desire from all the small employers of just what sort of transit amenities or resources or benefits were out there. And so using this program as a way to help leverage and support those small businesses with better information would be helpful. And then from the commissions, we heard some more tactical kind of how is this actually going to work feedback, which was really helpful. So identifying clear metrics of success, establishing qualitative monitoring. The commissions didn't want to place kind of undue burden on project applicants or city staff, for that matter, in terms of monitoring the outcomes. There is also a strong desire for safety in terms of the roadway environment, really enhancing the walking and bicycling environment and using kind of new development as a way to leverage that. And there's a desire to understand who would be benefiting from these measures and what sort of triggers could be used to not just include new development, but also existing businesses incorporate them into the program. And there's also discussions and requests for transportation management agencies, authorities. So when we went through our analysis of how this program could be applied to San Mateo, we wanted to understand what is the current state of the practice for TDM plans. And so we reviewed five existing TDM plans and to determine how those TDM plans might change if we implemented this ordinance. And in comparing it to CCAG's required requirements as a baseline, we found that there was a fairly inconsistent use of strategies, naming conventions, which can make it a little hard to track, and all but one of the projects did not meet the CCAG requirements, partially because the CCAG requirements were just recently adopted after some of these projects were approved. So this new TDM ordinance would ensure consistency across projects, allow for the city to prioritize city-specific measures, and take a greater control over what plans are implemented. We also wanted to look at what the triggers would be to bring in, who has to participate in this program. And so there's three triggers that we've been looking at. One is the new construction permit, which is your traditional, that's what CCAG requires, and that's what, you know, new development would be the type of program that this would typically be applied to. There's also the opportunity for new business license renewals, kind of with a minimum threshold of employees, for example, that you could bring in existing businesses with, or commercial building permits for improvements valued at a certain threshold. We did look at this threshold of $500,000 valuation in coordination with the planning department, and as you can see, there's 82 projects over the last three years that would qualify for that. So that's one potential based on other, you know, cities in San Mateo that is being used. And the TDM ordinance can really be right-sized, the requirements for different project types, you know, for existing versus kind of proposed new development. And you can also apply different considerations for affordable housing. When we talk about how do we know whether this is going to be effective, we are talking about the compliance and monitoring steps. And so our partners at Nelson-Niagara had helped develop this four-step approach to show how a project could qualify, whether it's they're in good standing, where they might not need to do monitoring every year, but maybe every few years, and there wouldn't be any, obviously, noncompliance penalties. For newer projects that are in the light green category, they might need to show more frequently that they're doing well, doing what they said they would do. And then categories for if they're either noncompliant or noncompliant for a substantial amount of time, and there might be fees associated with that as well. And this, happy to come back to this, I'm not going to dwell on this too long, but just to show that a generally compliant project is, you know, going to have to do fewer monitoring, less monitoring, and over the course of their time, Wallace Serial Noncompliant Project is going to have to show every year what they're doing and may potentially have additional fees. Now, just to reiterate the questions that we have for you all today of these topics that I just presented, we would like to hear from you, what kinds of projects should comply with the TDM ordinance? What are those triggers that I just talked about? How often should San Mateo monitor for the TDM plan compliance? Is this annual or every two to three years? How should the city treat projects that are out of compliance? And what are the consequences for those projects that are serially out of compliance? With that, I'll hand it back to Sue Ellen.
Thanks, Matt. So to close it out, we'll just briefly go over the remaining schedule and what to expect over the coming months. So after this meeting, we will incorporate feedback from the council on the policy direction for the TDM policy development. And then we'll go into drafting that TDM ordinance and also developing the ordinance program guidelines that will be available. They're the primary deliverable, aside from the ordinance as part of this project. So that will be guidelines for how developers will implement the TDM ordinance. In later winter and early spring, we'll be back to the council and commissions with a draft ordinance and receive additional feedback at that point for incorporating into the final ordinance. And then, after that, finalize the ordinance, finalize the program guidelines, bring to council for final adoption. And then after adoption, we'll be working on educational materials for the development community to have available on the city's website and to share with the stakeholders. And with that, we'll conclude the staff presentation. Matt and I are both available if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. This is the time for council questions. Who'd like to begin? Councilmember Hedges.
Thank you. Very good report. Appreciate it. Question about existing businesses. So we have an area in San Mateo near Bridgepoint that has 10 office buildings, a large retail center, and multiple homes, there's no single-family homes, with several thousand residents. Apartment buildings, you have Gilead that's right next to, and we have three shuttles, the North Foster City Shuttle, the Lincoln Shuttle, and the Mariners Island Shuttle. We have the 251 bus that runs through Foster City and through Bridgepoint, stops actually at the corner of Mariners Island and Foster City. So my question is, shouldn't that be entered into a TDM area?
That's part of the question before council tonight, is what projects should this ordinance apply to? So currently, in the city, when projects are coming in for development applications, that's the time at which they're currently required to develop a TDM plan. One question for the council is, do we apply the TDM ordinance in the future to existing complexes, be it commercial? We generally haven't seen that applied for residential, for existing, but if that's the council recommendation, we can look into how that may be done. But in terms of existing office buildings, such as what you've noted, that's something that could be done through the business license renewal cycle. And then there's also the consideration for when buildings undergo a tenant improvement for a new company to come in at a certain dollar value for improvement. That's a point at which the TDM requirements could be triggered. So to answer a question with a question, that would be the policy feedback that we're requesting.
The reason I'm bringing this up is that there's three buildings right now that are being converted to biotech, pretty expensive conversions. And there's some interest in another where there are two buildings about actually building some housing. Nothing come forward yet. And of course, the Bridgepoint Shopping Center is now full. It's running counter to the rest of the retail areas in the city. So I would be in favor of existing, quite frankly. That's where I would be now. But I would want your leadership on that to give me some advice.
Any other questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you through the mayor, and thank you, Sue Ellen and Matt. Really appreciate you bringing us up to speed on this. There's a lot to think about. Couple of questions that I have. I saw the review of all the stakeholders. When are you going to be talking to community members, your people, as opposed to organizations or developers?
For this ordinance, there is a focused, a focused community, if you will, where it's applicable. And so that would be for projects that are coming in, or large employers that are in the area, or something of that nature. So for this type of project, it did not seem prudent to do a community-wide engagement strategy, such as like we're doing for our transportation plans that we're doing right now. It's very focused, it's very policy-specific, and the general community feedback may not be as applicable in this type of project as it would be for a citywide planning document or for a larger project of infrastructure or something of that nature. So in keeping with the more focused nature of the ordinance, we did a robust but focused community engagement strategy to focus on the different audiences that would be either affected by the ordinance or involved with the ordinance.
Thank you, and I completely understand that approach, I guess. And I would be interested in whether you could do some targeted community outreach, because wherever the buildings are, like these three buildings that Councilmember Hedges is talking about, they're going to have people around them and may have opinions, may have ideas about how do you get people out of cars and into, and how do you take advantage of what's happening in those buildings? Like, I was looking at your sheet and things like last mile, transportation, shuttles, all of that. I would just hate to have the people who are going to be impacted by those buildings not have the opportunity to sort of say, we want to support TDM, here's how we think in this area would make most sense. So that was more than a question. And then, I know you looked at best practices in thinking about all these questions. Do you have a matrix of what other cities on the peninsula are doing? And I'm seeing a smile, so I'm thinking you probably do.
Yes. So cities such as Redwood City, South San Francisco have adopted TDM ordinances, and San Jose is another example of one that we looked at. You know, San Mateo is really the next behind the cities in terms of developing a robust TDM strategy. So, yes.
And did that include not only new developments, but also the thought of, you know, targeting commercial buildings when they go for major improvements or conversions? Was that included when you were looking at other cities?
I can look it up. That was a specific.
Yeah, okay. So it's the, I can make my comment, but I don't, I'll make my comment when it's comment time. Let's see.
If I can speak a little bit more to that. One of the more recent ordinances that was adopted was in East Palo Alto, and that is one of the more broad ordinances, I would say, particularly in our local area. That is one that does apply retroactively to existing businesses. And when we went more in depth with the case studies for the commissions, and that was one aspect of the East Palo Alto ordinance that both of the commissions commented on.
Let me put my question out there. Did you consider the fact that if we are doing that and we're sort of an outlier or a first to market, does that create a disincentive for businesses in San Mateo versus others?
Since it would apply to existing businesses, and any business that would be coming to San Mateo would likely be required, if they were to be required to comply, they would be required upon move-in or doing the tenant improvements, et cetera. That may not be the case, but that being said, it was part of the case study. We don't know yet that that's something that we would necessarily recommend at first. I think that there are a lot of options for us right now to consider, including the tenant improvements and perhaps, you know, at different thresholds to expand where we're requiring TDM right now, so that we can start to move the needle a bit, rather than jumping right into existing businesses.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess the one last question is, is part of your consideration, or is the discussion tonight about noncompliance going to involve why is a building or a developer or anyone noncompliant? Because there could be lots of reasons why they're noncompliant, and maybe it's not so bad, or I don't know.
Sure. I can start, and then Matt can add in. One item that, we had a very short timeframe on presenting, so we packed in a lot of information, and we still even left some out. So one aspect that we didn't discuss is what does compliant mean? Is it, you know, what is the metric that we're looking at? So there is opportunity for that metric to be reduction in number of trips, or it could be purely are the measures that are required to be implemented being implemented? And there are two different factors to consider there. The developer or applicant or project development manager, property manager, that's the word, they are the ones who are required to be implementing the measures, and that is what the ordinance would be requiring. Specific trip reduction after implementation depends very heavily on human behavior, and that's something that property management can't necessarily account for. So that's something that we didn't go into quite yet. But we are looking at how to establish metrics that focus on the provision of the measures and less on human behavior and actual uptake.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you through the mayor. Could we consider exceptions to some types of otherwise qualified participants, such as 100% affordable housing developments? And are you And are you considering any other carve-outs or parameters, if so, so that this doesn't negatively impact the city's focus on increasing housing to address the housing crisis?
So when we start with, what are the current requirements today? CCAG's policy applies to both affordable and market rate housing, and has, you know, it is tailored towards affordable housing in terms of taking into account the slight differences that, you know, affordability can make. Now, the types of measures that affordable housing providers could do, you could, for example, include design features that, you know, the developer incorporates within their construction, but that may not change the cost of the building much, such as providing great, you know, bicycle parking, for example. So that's the type of thing that affordable housing projects, for example, could do, that wouldn't, we did not hear was a major obstacle within, you know, our stakeholder engagement. The key issue that is the stakeholder, that the stakeholder brought up, was really transit pass subsidies, for example. There's no kind of funding mechanism, direct, easy funding mechanism for them to be able to do that, although at the countywide level, certainly, that is something that's being considered right now.
Thank you. Sue Ellen, what is the anticipated relationship between this plan and the pricing of our downtown parking in our parking lots?
That's a good question. The parking pricing is typically viewed as a potential TDM measure, because the theory is that you could price parking to a point where people will think twice about driving and parking, as opposed to taking another mode to get somewhere. Since this TDM ordinance applies to individual projects or individual buildings, that relationship won't necessarily be direct. But parking pricing within the city is something that we can look at more generally as a trip reduction measure in the future.
Thank you. Can you remind me whether we currently have a TMA downtown?
We do not currently. The only TMA, or Transportation Management Association, is in the rail corridor TOD area, which is around our Hayward Park Caltrain Station and our Hillstall Caltrain Station.
Do you anticipate this plan leading to a TMA being formed downtown and/or anywhere else?
This plan, this ordinance requires entities to implement TDM measures for their building, for their property, et cetera. If a TMA were established in the downtown, or the rail corridor TMA were to be expanded, that would be at the direction of city council, separate from this plan, ordinance, I'm sorry. And the way that the rail corridor TMA is currently structured is a little different than other similar TMAs are structured, and in the role that it plays in monitoring, et cetera. For example, in Palo Alto, there's a downtown TMA that provides TDM measures, and is not involved in the monitoring of individual projects. So it would be a consideration of what type of model for the TMA to set up elsewhere, or to expand the current TMA. That wouldn't necessarily be something that would be recommended or done as part of this ordinance. But were council to direct staff to evaluate the development of a TMA in the downtown, it could play a role in consolidating and offering TDM measures to help businesses meet the requirements of the TDM ordinance.
Excellent, thank you. No further questions.
Through the mayor, thank you. Could you expand upon how you determine specific trip reductions? So I'm assuming if I build a new office building, I report to you how many people are coming via shuttle, via train, how many bike spots are being used? Is that, is that right, or is there more to it? And then, is it self-reporting? Or is there something that we need to go and actually collect data to determine?
Yeah, so that's one of the key questions for you all, and what we heard from the commissions, for example. They said, "We're fine with qualitative approach. Just make sure that the measures are being implemented. Provide documentation of that." And that documentation that the measures are being provided could be, for example, yeah, the number of shuttles that are being run, the number of passengers that they have, the amount of transit passes that they're handing out, versus a more quantitative approach, which a city like Redwood City did take that approach to establish kind of a mode-share goal for different areas. And others, there's trip caps as well, that are other places where Facebook, for example, has to monitor the amount of cars that are coming in and out of their campus every day. So there are really robust quantitative measures of, out there, but it does require a lot of administrative oversight from both applicant, as well as the city.
Thank you. Do we have existing projects that have already been built that we can retroactively go back and apply a TDM to? Or a TDM plan to? I'm not saying that right.
That would be if it's at the direction of council to include a retroactive measure.
And along those lines, how often, if, for other cities that have rolled this out, have they gone back and done that for, I mean, what have other cities, what have other cities done, what does that look like?
Sue Ellen mentioned East Palo Alto. Redwood City as well includes a trigger, so that any existing residential, commercial, industrial development that asks for a permit to change their parking supply, or change in land use or density, you know, that, they get rolled into the plan as well. With respect to the question of, like, how has that worked? I don't have that in front of me, but, you know, it's part of your regulatory process, your permitting process going forward.
Yeah, I was more asking along the lines of, we've already had some significant development in the last four years, and can we go back and say, "Look, you're new enough that you need to participate"? Or is that at our discretion, or, I don't know?
I will say that a number of, I almost want to say a majority, but I hesitate there, of larger development projects that have come in in the last several years do have a TDM plan. So in the rail corridor area, they're required to. In the downtown area, it is voluntary, but by and large, we have seen projects that do voluntarily implement a TDM plan. Even the Peninsula Heights Project also did a TDM plan, and that's entirely out of the downtown area. But that said, if there is a desire to set certain triggers, so that existing entities are required to participate, or comply, rather, that is certainly something that we are recommending you consider.
I can interject just for a moment. I mean, if the council is interested in this direction, I just wanted to emphasize that applying a TDM ordinance to existing buildings would require some additional research.
Sure, thank you. And then, but if they already have a TDM that's not being monitored, we could activate that effectively, right?
Under the existing monitoring requirements is part of the conditions of approval.
And approximately, how many projects or do we have in the city of San Mateo that currently have TDM plans?
That is something I'd have to research and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you for your questions, or your answers. Thank you.
Do you have any additional?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, just for the purposes of clarity, would you mind just restating how our citywide TDM ordinance would relate to or influence the rail corridor TMA? Like, would it supplant the standards?
I'm sorry, I was waiting for you to finish.
No, I'm, I guess, I think it would just be helpful for us to understand, because we want to get away from having lots of different plans that conflict with each other, right? We're trying to get to unified vision, you know, an umbrella that covers everything, and there are not, you know, stark inconsistencies and standard, different standards that have different enforcement mechanisms, and different triggers under, you know, with the same intent, right, within the same city. So I just, you know, for the, for the purposes of restating our overarching goal, and having, you know, prioritizing synergy and consistency, and, you know, a unified vision and plan to execute on those vision, especially for something as important as, you know, transit. I just would like, for the, you know, purposes of this conversation, to be really crystal clear about what this relationship would look like, where we have a rail corridor, we have many projects that fall under the rail corridor TMA, and now we're talking about a citywide ordinance. So if you could just, you know, illuminate how these two coexist or interact, where, you know, where we might, you know, where we might find some rubs or friction, and how, you know, what the plan is to sort those things out.
That's a great question. I think, first, the rail corridor TMA is an established entity, and that body brings together all of the projects within the rail corridor area. And, you know, right now, the primary function that they're doing is bringing all the companies together, which is wonderful, but also doing the annual trip counts that are required as part of those projects' conditions of approval, and presenting the annual report. So the TMA is an entity that helps those projects meet their trip reduction goals. The TDM ordinance would require other projects to implement similar TDM measures to those that are already required in the rail corridor area, for example. For projects that are already, the rail corridor area is already quite largely built out. So projects that are existing, they have their own TDM plans, they have their own requirements and their conditions of approval. For new projects that come into the rail corridor area, that's an aspect of the policy that we need to investigate further, as part of the policy development. So I don't have an answer for you at this point. But the development of the TDM ordinance and requirements to implement TDM measures would not affect the existence of the entity of the rail corridor TMA.
Okay, so, you know, for, I think for the purposes of this conversation, I guess I do have a follow-up question. So I know that, you know, our council really cares about affordable housing, right? And helping affordable housing developers have, you know, viable projects, you know, that can come online, and also sustain over many years, given, you know, their very, very slim margins of operation, right? And so, you know, if we were to think about considerations or concessions, or, you know, different levels of, for example, compliance monitoring, like, you know, whatever the menu is that we're considering to make sure that we're, that we're balanced, or striking a balance between our goal of transportation management, and supporting the development and production of affordable housing. So, you know, if that's the case, and we start, we set a standard in our citywide ordinance, how would that potentially interact with or apply to the, you know, the TMA that's in the rail corridor? And could it? Because I think that there are unresolved issues right now with how our affordable housing projects are being treated, and, you know, taking an equity lens, and applying it to, you know, to them in terms of the standards that we should be holding, affordable, 100% affordable housing projects to. You know, if there's, if there's something that's clearly not working in our TMA, is this, is this a space to open up a conversation about how our citywide ordinance can, you know, can create some sort of umbrella standard that would then apply to the TMA that's already been established and has an entity?
As, another good question. Matt, as Matt mentioned, we heard similar from our stakeholder feedback, and we're including evaluation of how 100% affordable or a certain threshold of affordable housing would fall under the TDM ordinance, and what requirements would be made of those types of projects, or what exceptions would be made. So that's something that we are considering as we develop the ordinance, because that is something that we've seen in the rail corridor area, and that's something that we've seen in the CCAG TDM policy as well. So that is under consideration. With regard to how it would affect the TMA, again, the TMA is just, it's an organization. So I think the consideration would be, how would the citywide TDM ordinance affect projects that come into the rail corridor area?
And pre-existing projects.
And pre-existing projects. And I think that's something that we would have to discuss with the city attorney's office, because those are all previously approved projects with TDM plans that all fall under the rail corridor plan. So I think in terms of looking at existed, existing adopted TDM plans and requirements for those projects, that's something that would have to be done in conjunction with the city attorney's office and Community Development Department.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then, I guess I have some other questions, like, for example, I saw on the slide you had a chart that showed, you know, I think, the number of projects that have a valuation of $500,000 annual revenue and above. Is that right? Do we have an overlay on that graph that also tracks number of employees that work on site? Because I think, you know, like, with the tech industry, for example, we can have a three-person staff that, you know, that has a $500,000 revenue base. So I just, that, that, you know, that one data point alone, I don't, I just am kind of curious about in terms of how, how we're looking at that in relationship to number of employees on site, for example.
Yeah, and that's a great question, in looking at that particular consideration. Again, we looked at 500,000 as just an example threshold, in that there were some smaller projects that fell in there. So it might be something where we're looking at a bit of a higher threshold. But if council feedback is to also look at employee count, we can certainly fold that in.
Okay, and then my other question would be, you know, we want to be very judicious about drafting policies that create work, significant work in terms of monitoring, and compliance and administration for our city. And so, you know, when we're discussing, you know, the cadence of the evaluation periods, I think it's helpful for us, you know, to understand what that means in terms of impact to budget, impact to staffing levels, and your, and city capacity. So, you know, do you mind kind of helping us put some, you know, some more color on that?
Just from our perspective, and then a few of from other cities. I think that, that would depend on what the metrics are that we're looking at. As Matt noted, there are qualitative measures, and there are quantitative. The quantitative monitoring would require quite a lot more administrative time on behalf of staff, and on behalf of the projects themselves. That monitoring of that nature probably could not be undertaken with the number of staff that we have at this time. And so we would need to be looking into how that would be accomplished. If it were something that were more quantitative, such as reports and that sort of option, that's something that we can look at in terms of staff time and determine how it would be met.
And just to follow up on that, so by, I remember you were talking about two different ways to evaluate, and one, you know, one being evaluating impact, which is hard to evaluate, number one, and is, you know, and is largely driven by a variable of human behavior, right? Are you counting that as qualitative or quantitative?
Looking at the trip reduction numbers, you know, if there's a trip cap, if there's a percentage mode split, that would be qualitative. If we're looking at what was provided on behalf of the entity, that would be quantitative.
Okay.
Qualitative. I mixed that up, I'm sorry.
What? Okay.
I got it backwards, just flipped that around.
Okay. So, okay, so, simple terms, I, what I heard you say, you know, is, if we have a checkbox list of, you know, these are the services list of, you know, these are the services and the actions that the, you know, that were taken, that's quantitative? Or is that qualitative?
Qualitative.
That's qualitative. So you're saying that measure is harder for staff to evaluate?
That would be easier. Yeah, I should have, I should have had Matt answer, because I just confused everything. When we take human behavior out, and we're just looking at, did the entity provide the measures that they're meant to do?
Right.
That is more of a checklist or provision of documentation that they're providing. That's more cut and dried on both of our parts, frankly, than if we're saying, okay, do a mode split survey, oh, you know, you're off by 2% on transit, that sort of thing. That's much more effort on behalf of the city and the project.
Okay, so for this conversation, can we, can we just shorthand that, you know, checkboxes of actions taken?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, so that, so that is more manageable within staff capacity, and?
And I just hope that's clear for everyone at this point.
Okay, good.
We would be to assess with future workload, but that would be more manageable than the mathematical evaluation.
Understood. Okay, I think we're on the same page. Okay, and then, do we have flexibility to, to, hmm, to set compliance levels, like your, you know, according to your color chart, that could apply differently to, for example, 100% affordable housing projects versus other mixed-income projects versus other, you know, commercial projects?
Yes, that's within, within your control, so certainly setting at least kind of onerous process for your affordable housing projects is, sounds like where, what you all are looking for.
Well, I am. Sounds like Councilmember Lorraine is. Okay, so, so you're saying, so what I heard is that CCAG has standards, but the way that we apply the standards, we have some flexibility with.
What we're doing in the ordinance is looking to develop a city, a city-specific TDM ordinance. What we can do is have an ordinance that is as strict or stricter than CCAG, but we can tailor it for how our city operates.
Great. Okay, those were my questions. We can open it up to public comment.
I have no in-house public commenters. If anybody online would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand now. Thank you, we have no public comment.
Wow, we have no public comment about transportation? Hmm. Okay, so this is the time for council deliberations. We have questions before us. What kinds of projects should comply with TDM ordinance? Councilmember Hedges. Okay.
So as I said earlier, I think that we should apply TDM ordinances to existing projects, and I'll go over it again. One of the, if not the most impacted street in the city is the East Side access along 19th Avenue and Fashion Island, and something needs to happen there, because it's really creating issues. We have a total of 10 office buildings, all but two are above the five-story limit under Measure Y, one as high as 13 stories. We have a robust shopping center and multifamily developments all across the East Side. So we have the basis for a lot of transit riders. I know that because I sent out a newsletter about every six, the people that I have email addresses on the East Side, telling them what's available. One of the problems is that when Sony came in and Sabrato sold, they did not continue their, their contract with Commute.org, nor did 951 and 901. Now, in negotiations with the new owners, they've agreed to go ahead and go back to Commute.org. But the problem is that the funding is in and out, and if we have a TDM, it'll be constant. And these are really important vehicles for people to get to the regional rail. So I would say that there, my other city council members may have areas that they think are important, maybe 25th Avenue would be, but definitely we need to concentrate on the East Side, if nothing else, to try to get more people on transit.
So Councilmember Hedges, can I, can I interject with a clarifying question?
Sure.
So I think, it sounds like you have an interest. Are there specific triggers in mind that you would like to suggest?
Well, I don't, quite sure what you'd call a trigger, but I think just their existence is a trigger, and there's right now the fish market development that is going to go forward. We've got the three developments on Mariners Island and Fashion Island that are going forward right now with biotech, which will have people in-house. Biotech brings people in, they don't work remotely. And Sony, as far as I know, is not doing any remote either. So we have people present, so that should be a trigger, that we have a lot of folks there, but there's new development right now that's going forward. Does that answer your question?
I guess, no, I think that there's, there's a conver, I think you're raising a suggestion about how this could apply to existing, you know, existing projects, right? And, right?
My understanding is, all we have to do as a city council is say it should evolve, evolve to existing projects, then that would, would happen.
I mean, I think that, I guess that, if that's something that a majority of council is interested in, but I think that to take that conversation further, then we want to understand what threshold it should apply, what are the triggers that, you know, that this, you know, they would fall into a, you know, the TDM?
I don't think there's any project, or any area in, in the East Side that wouldn't do the $500,000. So that would be one of the triggers.
Okay.
So, and I'd be interested in hearing what other people think, if there's areas that could benefit from this in their districts.
Through the, through the mayor?
So, so if I can just sum up, I think we should extend it to existing businesses.
And I heard of a comment under the building permit trigger as well, for improvements that are valued above a certain threshold, perhaps. It's, it's the dollar amount of the improvements, not the, not the revenue being brought in. I just want to clarify my understanding.
Well, I can tell you right now that those biotechs are going over $500,000. That's probably just loose change.
Deputy Mayor has a question.
Thank you very much, through the mayor. My initial thinking is that we should be focusing on new buildings and not existing, and not in terms of buildings that are asking for enhancements, because I am very concerned, even if they're here, that if other cities are saying, sure, we want you, come to Foster City, or come to whatever, and we keep putting these burdens on them, that they will, some may take off. But on the other hand, I think it's very important to do TDM where we can and where it makes sense. So, and I don't know enough about the triggers, certainly, I would think like the mayor was talking about, the number of employees on site. Similar to the mayor, I would have, I would want a much higher threshold, dollar threshold, because you can, to your point, have very small number of people making a lot of money, and therefore, is that fair? But is there such a thing as a district that you could, because what I'm hearing in Councilmember Hedges' questions is that he represents an area where there are a lot of very unique circumstances that might make it very interesting to do a TDM district there, but, you know, just to say we want to do it existing everywhere, I think is too broad a brush. So looking to your professional expertise as to how that might, is that viable, or how might that happen?
I think that that would be a question for the city attorney's office, because I think there would be concern about equity in how we're applying the ordinance. And, and just to the question about the certain, the triggers, improvements to a building, the building permits that we were looking at were tenant improvements, so that is primarily when a tenant is moving out, and a new tenant is moving in, and they're making the space their own. So it's not the amount of money that the, that the business is generating, it's the amount of improvements that they're doing to that space.
The investment.
Which is generally comparable to the size of the, of the building and the size of the entity. But, but hearing the concerns, we can look at how we can really narrow in, so that it's not just improvements, and that it's not smaller entities. And I think Matt has something to add.
Yes, thank you, Sue, on through the chair, through the mayor, sorry. Other cities have applied kind of minimum employment thresholds, so that, you know, project, like, you know, a new development that has less than 100 employees, or, or like 50 employees, is probably not going to qualify for the ordinance. And similarly, you know, an existing building, you could screen that out as well, so.
Okay, so, just for the sake of time, I think we should, you know, be as efficient as possible in moving through, so we can provide comprehensive feedback for, to Sue Ellen and team, right? So, Councilmember Lorraine?
All right, I'll try my best to be quick. This is a complex topic that is, is hard to digest in this timeframe, but I'll do my best. I'll try to start by answering the questions, because I think that would be expedient. What kinds of projects should comply? I would like us to consider all of these. I feel like, I agree with the deputy mayor that we want to focus on new businesses and developments. That is, that is the primary focus here. But I agree that there's room, I think there should be room to find ways to bring in existing businesses. I think the building permit sounds good for the, you know, the sort of existing businesses that I think Councilmember Hedges is talking about, established developments that, like, are of a size and scope that would qualify had they been new ones coming in, for example. And Matt mentioned a little bit about, I mean, I think there are some CCAG minimums and parameters, like, you know, a certain amount of square feet, for example, and a certain number of employees, that I imagine will be hewing toward, to avoid, you know, unduly burdening small businesses downtown, for example, et cetera. So I think there's a little bit of that baked into what's already been, what CCAG's already doing, so I feel pretty comfortable about that. And the renewal of a business license does sound like a cool idea to try and get other businesses of an appropriate size and scope to participate on some really light baseline qualitative level. Because this is an opportunity to, to, you know, work together as a city, to really try and advance the goals we have in our general plan. And that's why this, you know, this is part of our general plan, this TDM citywide ordinance. I see roles for, you know, the, I see an interest, I would just mention, in encouraging the creation of more TMAs. I think downtown, for example, could have a TMA, perhaps the DSMA could be involved in some way. I do want to, like, not reinvent the wheel and try to partner with as many organizations as possible, including Commute.org. They were part of your focus group, and I want to make sure we work with their Bay Area commuter benefits program, for example, and apply some of their standards. But I, and I think there are ways for the city to get involved, too. But before I get too off track, how often should San Mateo monitor for TD? I'll just, I'll make a quick comment, too. As I mentioned, like, a light threshold for business license. I just think, like, it'd be cool if we could get as many people involved in this as possible at some really light baseline level, that allows people to contribute and helps the overall program grow and, and be more visible and relevant. How often should it monitor for TDM? I think annually is okay, and I like the idea brought in the presentation about potentially stepping back monitoring for those who have demonstrated consecutive compliances. So I think there's room for that. How should the city treat projects that are out of compliance? With a light touch, I think, as the mayor mentioned already, and as I'm sure the SIC is going to discuss with you on Wednesday, there are, you know, we're still working out the best way to implement the rail corridor TMA and TDM plans. That's still a work in progress, and there's a lot of iteration going on there. And so I think, like, you know, but I also think that, in general, that TMA is trying to focus on the shared goal of reducing single-occupant vehicle car trips, as opposed to being punitive. And, and so I just think that this ordinance should definitely take a similar approach. I thought the South Francisco case study seemed most reasonable to me in that regard. It has, like, sort of a three-strikes idea, where, like, first, and I think that is kind of similar to our rail corridor. It's like, first, we talk to you about it and say, hey, you know, have you considered these other options? Or can you come to us with some other ideas on how you can remedy this? Then maybe we, like, try to partner with, like, Commute.org or somebody to give them, like, some vetted solutions. Maybe that could be the same option. And only after consecutive, you know, failures or something, would we want to, like, think about any sort of real punishment. But in general, like, we're just trying to educate and get people into this program. And then how should consequences, yeah, be structured? Yeah, again, I would want to kind of be, I feel like that would be something we could iterate on, and I feel is not really the primary focus. So I feel like I have a million other comments, but I'll, I'll stop there for now.
Thank you. That was a great example of getting comprehensive feedback to staff. Councilmember Newsom?
First question, I concur with what Councilmember Lorraine said. I think as many of these four that we can capture, we should. Second, how often? I think with a new person and a new plan, it'll have to start off being annually, and then I would expect that at a certain point, when you see that there's compliance, then you can probably roll that out to a two- or three-year term for review. I liked also what Councilmember Lorraine said about three strikes, where you have a warning, and, you know, verbal warning, and try to get them on board. Then you have a, we're going to, you know, actually do something to help you try to get on board, like partnering with Commute.org, or Caltrans, or one of the, Caltrains, rather, one of these organizations. And then finally, the third strike being, now we're actually have some punitive thing. But I think initially, the idea is try to get everybody on board with this, and, because it's the right thing to do, and company, you know, good company governance says, like, you want to be a green company, you want to have this. And I think that would be another thing that I had as a comment, would be making sure that we're calling out the participants of these programs, and spotlighting them, and giving them, you know, like, certain counties have green certifications, and, like, green business certifications, and I think the city could definitely do something like that on a very easy level of highlighting their participation, and kind of making that be a good PR thing for them. Signing light green to orange, oppose fees or not, I think I said that, like, fees as the third strike, as opposed to initially out of the gate. I hope we wouldn't get to a revoking certificate of occupancy, but I think those are pretty extreme. I also would mention that, you know, it's been a few years, but five years back, I used to work for, for a shuttle company, and we had routes, and I was looking at my notes. GoPro, iXL, and Sony were all San Mateo-based, city-based ones that used Chariot before Chariot closed. And so I just would, I could only call them out, because when I look at where those are on a map, most of them are not in a rail corridor, and, again, they might still want to voluntarily participate. And so we should be looking for these companies, even if they're not required to participate, to encourage them to, if that's something they're willing to do. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges?
I want to thank both Councilmember Lorraine and Councilmember Newsom. I was so focused on one particular area that I'd have to agree with both of them on everything they've said. So I think they did a great job.
Excellent. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, through the mayor. I absolutely knew construction, renewal of business license or business permit for improvements, I'd want to have some specific targeting involved in that, and I would look to you to say what makes sense, given our environment. I am loathe to put affordable housing projects into this right now, just because it's, it's everything we can do to try and get them to exist. So I would take a phased approach and say, let's focus on... So I would take a phased approach and say, let's focus on affordable housing projects, a step back or go after them later, because it's, it's hard enough to, to make a, make a pencil out. In terms of how often, I agree, you know, starting with annually and moving back, but rather than disincentives, I would strongly urge you to use incentives at every point. Reward the companies or the buildings that are doing a good job, whether it's the green seal, or they get some special benefit. Make people feel good about doing this, because if it's just a, oh my God, I've got to do this, or I have to pay $100,000 more, that's not going to help. So, whenever possible, incentives and education versus disincentives. I would, as a result, be more about, you know, assigning a green light or orange status and doing the one, two, three, but really shining a spotlight on the ones who are doing well. And I would not look at a, revoking a certificate of occupancy unless there were a whole lot of other things involved, because that's, that's pretty heavy duty. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm aligned with council on this. I really appreciate Councilmember Lorraine and his perspective, which really covered a lot of, of considerations that I had. I, you know, I'm, I'm open to considering inclusion of the affordable housing projects, but on a completely different scale. I think it's good to open up the conversation, but, but maybe have a totally different standard for, for compliance without penalty, basically. I don't want this in any way to inhibit in the production of affordable housing. And, and I'm, I'm open to creating some sort of very targeted threshold to, for inclusion of, of existing businesses that are outside the rail corridor, that could capture more businesses. So I'm, I'm interested in ideas. I, I appreciate what the deputy mayor said in terms of looking at the, you know, like, like we've all talked about, the, the number of employees on site, the scope of the project, the, you know, maybe the, the location specifically, and, and it's, you know, potentially, it's like proximity to residential. I think that there are ways that we can look at it and make sure that it's narrow. I'm, I'm open to every two years with a step back for a compliance, I think that that would be sufficient. A year goes by really quickly. And, agree with what council said about the green light, orange status. I think, I, I agree with the deputy mayor, I would, I would not want to revoke a certificate of occupancy, I think that that, for me personally, I would take that off of the menu. And I see other nodding heads. There's still, for me at least, an outstanding question in terms of, like, the legality of how we, how we bring in new, you know, existing projects, so I would, I mean, I hope we can ask our city attorney to look into that. And the, the other question, which is how our existing affordable housing projects that are in the existing TMA would, would potentially be folded into this new citywide ordinance? So those two questions for me, I would love to have staff come back with some more information on. Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I, I want to highlight, I appreciate that point about doing what we can to integrate what we already have into this plan, seems very important. There were a few other points that I think are really important that I'm going to try to quickly mention, and I hope the council might appreciate. I'd like to see this enable and require measures to improve the safety of the built environment, as was mentioned in, in planning commission. I, I feel like I'm aligned with many comments from commissioners on ensuring that the north star of this effort is to make San Mateo less congested with car traffic by advertising, but also improving safer, more accessible, and reliable multimodal options that more of us can use. A lot of the comments from the focus groups increase on increasing walkability, last-mile options, et cetera, and their concern about changing employee-tenant behavior, I feel, speak to this as well. So I'd like to see this possibly help us complete bicycle master plan and pedestrian master plan projects that are not yet funded, if that, there, there is some possibility to do that. I also think the city should participate as well in some of this effort. There could be benefits for attendees who come to city events on their bike, or scooter, or transit. I was thinking about the Booze on B Street event, that was so awesome, and, you know, that we, we have some events throughout the year, and I've gone to some events from, like, Sierra Club and other green-focused organizations that, like, might give you a raffle ticket if you came on your bike or didn't take a, a single occupant vehicle. And I feel like the city could maybe do something like that, that would help. Pilot stuff for city employees, as I believe the county has done to some extent, in that, like, if city employees could, you know, come to city hall outside of their car, could we incentivize that? Could we have an annual public meeting on transportation options in our city, just like a taste and talk or something, kind of like some of the Earth Day programming that we have, but in Transit Month, and do it for, like, to have, to have, to, to educate the public on what is available, as Councilmember Hedges was saying and others. And maybe we could, I would love if there were some way to reintroduce micro-mobility share into our city as a result of this work. It was awesome when we had bike share. I know we have a permit process in place and are looking for applicants. What can we do as we work on this to see what we can, to make that happen? Maybe we could contribute matching funds to micro-share, or a new shuttle or shuttle extension if a TMA voted to support it, and we could, you know, like, I just feel like there are so many opportunities here. And I just wanted to mention, there was an, an idea in the San Jose case study about having specific TDM measures and guidelines in a separate guidebook, as opposed to in the ordinance itself. That seems like a good idea to me, so that it could be updated administratively without needing council approval to change it all the time. I, again, I feel like this is an iterative process, of course, we've experienced a rail corridor, so, sorry, thank you.
So, I, you know, I really, I appreciate Councilmember Lorraine sort of opening up the conversation and expanding it into, you know, are there ways that the city can be looking more holistically at promoting, promoting more use of transit? And I don't, I don't know if this is, this is the right ordinance to have that conversation, but I would look to our city manager to understand, you know, where, where can we have that conversation? Is there a future study session opportunity? Is there, you know, is, is this something that can come back to us for more than a, you know, two-minute conversation?
So I would think the most appropriate place would be the citywide transportation plan, that's all encompassing. Would that be correct, Sue Ellen?
I would expect that that plan would include programmatic measures of that nature.
Exactly. Getting down to the, you're going, kind of refine more.
And what's the timeline to, for that to come back to us?
We'll be back in the first half of 2024.
Okay. I think we'll still be here. Okay. So, do you have everything you need from us?
We do. Thank you for all of the very thorough input.
Thank you. Okay, with that, what are we doing next?
Closed session.
Yes. We will now move on to the second item on this special meeting agenda, which is a closed session item, conference with labor negotiators. And, do I need to read?
I have no public comment on this.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe there's another comment in that Sean O'Malley will be appearing as a designated agency negotiator in place of Teresa, Teresa Abrahamson.
Yes. Thank you.